Stand for the pledge.
...................................................... Good evening, welcome to the January 19th, 2016, special meeting of the Milgeor Ryenbeck Quarter Trustees. Our special purpose for tonight's meeting is a tree workshop. Basically, we have members of our Tree Commission, Meg Crawford, Nick Monaco, and then representatives from Central Hudson, Pete McFarland and...
Mike Belugi.
Mike Belugi, okay. So, the backstory is that Central Hudson will be coming through on their every four-year pass to clear their corridor around the wires. And there's some potential for the village to potentially take down some of the trees. That would be most affected by the trimming. So that's what we're here to talk about tonight. It's not a public hearing. I know we have a lot of numbers in the public, so thank you for coming. But it's more workshop for kind of us to go over the parameters of what we may or may not want to do, and then it would, we would have a potentially an informational session for the public after that. So, we're going to start by turn over to Pete and kind of give us a little explanation of the process that Central Hudson goes through every, every four years and what we're looking at in the next few weeks here in the village.
All right. Can I be here now? Central Hudson does this with every municipality in its system. Central Hudson services over 80 municipalities throughout the entire service territory. And Central Hudson operates on what we call a four-year cycle for line clearance to maintain, as you said, the clearance in the corridor from the vegetation that grows in over that period of time. So, when in the process we were going to come to Ryenbeck, we came here to do a notification to the village. Generally, that's how we work. We go to each village leadership body and let them know, hey, we're planning on coming in, so we can address any concerns you had. At that time, we did hear from the Shade Tree Commission that there's a concern about a number of the trees for various reasons, but mainly the Norway maples were of the concern due to the impact of clearing over many cycles of trimming. So, you know, after hearing that concern, we also think that there's, you know, I don't know what to say, impact from the pressure of the clearance to the longevity and the usability of those trees in the village landscape. So, Central Hudson is not here necessarily to direct the village to remove those trees. But it is something that, obviously, if the tree was not there, there would not be the pressure, so to speak. The reason for the clearance is all regulation. Central Hudson is required by law to keep the clearance specs as they are. And so, as the trees grow larger and larger over many years, that pressure becomes more and more on the given tree. So, they end up looking worse and worse is really how it shakes out for the village. So, at the, you know, impetus of the Shade Tree Commission, we agree that many of the trees in the town are in a condition where they're probably entering the latter stage of their utility in your landscape for whatever municipal reasons you may have. Clearances from the road, sightlines being blocked, sidewalks heaving, pipes being clogged by roots, et cetera. But then also the fact that when we get done clearing them, they're going to take a significant hit by the cutting. So, that's kind of where we stand. Is that answering some of the dynamics?
So, can you give us, I know a lot of us were at the last Tree Commission meeting, but can you just review the specs about, you know, 2003, I think it was, there was a change?
Yes, okay. There were three blackouts in the, in history since utilities have been serving people in the United States with power. You know, our, our country has been learning how to deliver power for quite a long time. And the power grids have failed for several reasons over periods of time. Three times in our history it has happened where the federal government has stepped in and changed the way power is delivered nationwide. The third time that happened was in 2003. Power went out in August of 2003, went out for eight days. The power grid was shut down from northern Canada down to Washington DC. And the US government came out with new clearance specifications that all utilities were required to maintain. Basically, it works out to about a 10-foot clearance zone either side of a conductor and 15 feet below a primary conductor. There can be no tall-growing tree species within that zone, and that is in a maintained area. So, in a town setting where there's a tree on Front Lawn per se, the utility would lower that tree down 15 feet below that primary conductor. If it was an unmaintained area, the spec would require us to remove all the tall-growing trees from that zone. Does that clarify a little bit?
Right.
So, in effect, we look at it as maintained or unmaintained areas. So, if it is generally a wooded zone, the utility is going to remove the trees from the clearance zone, okay? Once we get into a maintained village of this, we're going to end up with an alley of trees, very similar to what you're seeing along Route 9, where there are tall-growing tree species, Norway maple in specifics. It is, it has a genetic map that it's going to grow 90 to 100 feet tall and spread 60 to 80 feet wide in an unimpeded zone. So, if that tree was growing out in a village park, in a wide-open setting, it would have no impedience, it would be developing to that size. Those trees are, I would say, maybe roughly in the first quarter of their development as a large shade tree. They're not large maples per se, but they only have a ceiling where the breadth of foam cable height or some, roughly 15 to 20 feet from the ground, they're going to be stopped from their normal growth pattern. And so, having been placed there, they are in a spot where they really can't develop into, they will never get the ability to develop into that shade tree. And so, they've gotten big enough now where they start to hang over that road and they really, once, once we go back through and re-clear again, you know, the impact of the clearing, the larger they get, is more severe on the, on the aesthetic quotient of that tree. Bigger that chopped tree gets, the more chopped tree you have individual landscape. So, they're becoming less and less effective for the village from an aesthetic purpose, as well as the fact that they're heaving sidewalks and things of that nature. So, I hope that speaks to what you're asking.
So, just for some historical perspective, there was a change, and most of the people here in the village have been used to that area around the wire being cut for decades, but there was a change in the spec. It used to be...
Yes, okay, I can speak to that. Or if you'd like to, Mike, go right ahead.
Yeah. Good evening, Mike Belugi. I'm the director of line clearance at Central Hudson. So, what, I'll give a little bit more of a historical perspective so you can understand where this has been progressing to. So, the 2003 blackout really changed the, I guess, the landscape for utilities as far as vegetation is concerned. And the federal government really took it from a transmission standpoint, bulk transmission, moving power from generations to stations to substations, and then out to people's houses and commercial buildings, okay? So, the transitions, the federal government kind of stopped at the substations. The New York State Public Service Commission picked up from there and moved out into the distribution system, which is service drops to houses and commercial buildings. So, the way the state government kind of regulates, they regulate basically not from a spec standpoint, but from a reliability standpoint. Basically, the number of outages that we have and the duration of the outages is what the state of New York regulates us by. So, to give you an understanding, Central Hudson's spec that we used to trim to for decades was a five-foot box around the wires, okay? That five-foot box is not what we're trimming today. So, the trees of old, they've been here going past 2000s, going backwards in time, they were in the ground and growing and were in our zone in 2007. Prior to that, they were getting a five-foot trim, okay, in a box. Now, the spec is basically ground to sky where we can, 10 feet on the side, 15 feet below if it is a yard tree, okay? That, talking to what Pete was just saying, that impact on the tree now, where it used to be able to grow up and maybe grow out like a V or whatever, it's now being flattened, so it's being pushed out sideways, which is from a highway perspective or from a maintenance perspective, it starts creeping into your site views and gets into your road maintenance and stuff. So, we're very conscious of that. But the state of New York basically has penalties associated with every utility in the state, associated with reliability. And just to give you a perspective of why trees are involved in this, for Central Hudson Gas and Electric, we've estimated that we touch about a million trees a year that we have to trim. And we figure, based on our reliability numbers, about 50% of our outages are tree-related. So, the impact of the new trimming program has reduced our tree-related outages by 35%. So, the specifications that we have are basically reviewed and approved by the state through the funding they give us in order to run the program. So, by default, we're really regulated on two levels. For our bulk transmission, we're regulated by the federal government as well as the state, and on the distribution side, we're regulated by the state. So, that's the history, and that's why you're seeing such a gradual, we've been kind of phasing this in, so we're going into our third four-year cycle. So, the trees are starting to feel the pressure more and more as we start spreading out our trimming. We've been sort of working municipality by municipality, trying not to do such a drastic change to the aesthetics, but we're to that point now in the third cycle that there is going to be some changes, and we wanted to be able to work with everyone. You know, if there's opportunities to help, we're going to try to do that. So, that's the historical perspective. I hope that helps.
Thank you. And I think that's the, the point where we're at is the, the issue, everyone's accustomed to what it looks like when you guys clear around the wires, but maybe not prepared for what it may look like with the, with the new spec.
So, we have... But that spec, though, you said it changed after 2003. You said you're on your third cycle of doing this. So, nothing's really changed, right?
Well, in 2003 was a blackout.
Right.
In 2007 is when we started our new program.
Right.
So, 2007, 8, 9, 10, and then we're 11, 12, 13, 14. So, we're, started last year, our third, basically, we're in our third cycle.
So, in 2007, you trimmed to those same, the same confines that you're going to do it now?
We started gradually going into that. The last time we were in Ryenbeck, we kind of, I don't know, it was kind of, we went a little bit light because there was some pushback on the trimming. We had spacer cable put in, we tried to do everything we could to kind of offset, especially on the main, main street, main thruways, but it's to the point now that we really can't kind of do light trimming anymore. So, we've been kind of gradually getting you there.
It's going to be, I wrote down, it's going to be a more aggressive cut this time, right?
It'll be a little bit more than what you're used to. We've been trying to get you there, yes.
So, when was the last time you were in Ryenbeck?
It was near the end of our, was at the end of our first cycle, I want to say it was around 2010 or 11. And we are currently behind on the cycle by about five months to six months. So, we're held up. Yeah, we're held up here. This is it. You guys are about the last village to be trimmed, or the last area to be trimmed before our third cycle, actually, our third time around, actually.
That's really my question, because in 2010, you were in, you've already instituted this process...
Yes.
...for the larger trimming, you know, for the larger box around it.
Yes.
We kind of were given a...
A brief.
Yeah.
We kind of did a little bit of a song and dance.
Right.
Some ways we did, and some areas we didn't.
Now, I'm saying we can't. And so, the reason we can't now when we could then is because, that's what I'd really like to know.
Okay, so, we kind of, I don't know what to put, we kind of blended ourselves into this, right? We've, we've learned after going through, I think it's 88 municipalities, that communications and being able to upfront explain our program is better than just coming in and doing our program. You know, ultimately, through either our highway permits or through our rightways, established rightways, we're doing maintenance, right? Where we have easements and slash rightways, we have the right to trim and cut. When we're in highway permits or high limitations, then it's not a maintenance, right? And our maintenance is based on our spec. So, one of the reasons why we want to come in and talk to you guys is some of these things are going to fall into the highway aspect of things, and, you know, for us to have that relationship with you guys, we might as well start it now. So, the last time that we came through, we really didn't have this discussion. It was, I want to say it was more after the fact we started, and then issues arose, and then after we met, we kind of backed off a little bit, especially in...
If this opportunity was not available, it would have been after the fact.
Right.
This would have been a thing of, what the hell are you guys doing in our town?
Right. So, we figured we'd take the upfront approach and try to get everyone to understand where we're coming from, try to work with you, and see if there's some synergies and/or opportunities.
And when is the proposed cutting or clearing supposed to take place?
We're staying out of the village until all this gets resolved. We are working around the village right now. So, we're here, and we're working the outskirts. We got about 145 miles coming out of the Ryenbeck substation in whatever the village mileage is, and we're kind of waiting for this process.
So, maybe a month from now?
Well, we would like to do it on a schedule that makes sense to you. Okay, so, I might also speak a little bit about what Gary's question was as to why, you know, why it's different. There isn't a black and white picture here. In other words, in 2007, the clock flipped over and the federal government said butcher every tree that was in sight, because the utilities have customer base, and they have, we have every desire to be working on a win-win relationship, whether it's a single landowner, one house, or a municipality filled with thousands of landowners and people that have interest in their town. So, the object is to say, we say back to the Public Service Commission, we're getting as best clearance as we can within the spec, and we intend on, over these several cycles, to get the villagers to be where it needs to be. And the Public Service Commission understands that there's going to be pushback from a change of a five-foot box to a 10-foot either side. It's a big change. So, it's well-known in the industry, but it needs to be, efforts need to be made to do so. So, mainly, this communication is to let you guys know that this dynamic exists as well, because you guys are the stewards of the town. So, as Mike is saying, where there's synergies and it makes sense, so then we try to identify where, well, where would it make sense to start doing something along these lines? Technically, utility has no responsibility to remove any tree anywhere. It's not utility property. In fact, we are supposed to minimize costs to the ratepayer by leaving whatever's left. So, if you can imagine cutting a maple and very drastically chopping this thing and leaving that deer ant or standing by the side of the road that is making everybody crazy, we're supposed to ride out of town and say, have fun cutting a tree down there. It's the dynamic that a state government would take from the regulations standpoint. That's not our intention. Our intention is to try to work out some measure of developing a win-win relationship with the group of people, so we can do what's best for you. So, then it becomes a matter of decision for this group. If the group has decided that for a municipal reason, a tree is no longer acceptable, that could be that it's ugly. If that's your determination, you don't want that ugly tree in that location in town because it's detracting from the atmosphere, that's a perfectly acceptable reason for your village to make the choice of taking that out of the landscape. If it's clogging the drainage pipes and causing flooding problems, and there's a maintenance issue where you're, you know, grinding the root systems out of these pipes on a schedule, and it's a cost reason, that could also be a reason why it comes out. Central Hudson is not saying you have to cut your trees down. Central Hudson is saying that if that removal, we would go the extra money to help you with the remaining portion that we did not cut during the trim. So, the portion of money that's associated with what is under our spec, which is your property and your responsibility, has nothing to do with the utility per se, Central Hudson would offer to assist with that if it made sense, because in the endgame, that tree would not need maintenance from the wire perspective later. So, the extra cost makes sense. Now, we do get audited by the state, and so we can't necessarily come into Ryenbeck and spend $60,000 additional to help the Ryenbeck town with its removals and not share that same exposure to, say, Sorbetes or Newburgh or any of the other municipalities. You can't show a preference. We have to show that this is a progressive plan that makes sense. In fact, we think this could be a model for many of the utilities. They are all struggling with the same dynamic. They all have old shade trees that have been repeatedly cut from the clearance, and they have a limited amount of resources to deal with those types of issues. So, if this works in this town, or some semblance of something comes out of this town, we can carry that to the next, and will help the next town with the same type of thing. So, we are learning from you. We know that the last time coming through didn't work out that great. The notifications weren't where they needed to be. Central Hudson doesn't notify, it does it by mail. All of you are perceived, if you've lived on two of the circuits in this town, you've gotten your letter. The other ones will be getting it imminently, and that's all we're required to do. Doesn't necessarily mean that you're going to know what we're doing on a given street, see? Because if you didn't read the letter, or if they've gotten your junk mail because you thought it was, you know, an advertisement, or, you know, a family member read it and didn't pass it around, then you were notified, but you may not know it, see? So, that's why we stepped up the notification. We wanted to make sure that there was a clear picture for your leadership to be able to try to manage the information.
But did you go and, did Central Hudson or some entity go and identify certain trees that were proposed to be taken down?
Yeah, what happened, I'm sorry.
That's just a yes or no, and then I have a follow-up.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so, can you walk us through that process?
Yes, of course.
Who did that? How came, what did they factor in? What factors they took into consideration, making those determinations as to whether or not a tree should be removed?
Yes, okay. First, the process was between myself and the Shade Tree Commission, okay? The representative there that day was Meg. And what we did first, we sat down, we talked about what our concerns were with coming in to do the trim, or clearing, I should say. And then we went out, and quite frankly, my expectation was that there was going to be, you know, a minimization mindset. Is there any places that you can minimize the impact for us? And in fact, it was a different one. It was more of an arboricultural discussion. So, maybe just a little background for, for those listening and for you guys as well. I've been a certified arborist and a tree preservationist for 25 years of my career prior to clearing right away for a utility. And I can tell you that arboriculture is the science of leveraging people and their love for trees. It has nothing to do with trees. Trees need no people. They need to be in a forest away from all people to thrive and grow up. Once they end up in an urban setting, Ryenbeck is quite a bucolic town, and it's not typically, if you're coming up here from New York City and buying a beautiful farmhouse and/or a beautiful village home, to you from that perspective, this is not going to be, quote, "an urban setting" if you're living on Fifth Avenue. But for the tree, it's quite urban. It's living next to the side of this road, it's being flooded with road salt every winter, it's being blown, you know, various, all kinds of impediments, arboriculturally, limit the ability of the Norway maple to grow to its normal and healthy state. So, in a sense, roadside trees are stressed, and they have a lot of, how do you want to say, impediments or detractments that make them unviable. So, when Meg and I did ride around, we were discussing the current condition of the trees, specifically Norway maples in town. And I agree wholeheartedly with her from an arbor, arbor cultural level, that the trees are not, they don't even represent Norway maple in your town. They are, you know, they've been cut many times, and they are not really what a maple should even resemble. They don't resemble anything like what an uncut maple would look like. From a physiological perspective from the tree, okay, the trees are perfectly happy cut Norway maples. Norway maples break, Norway maples get struck by lightning, Norway maples fall apart just because their structures are generally weak, and as they get older, they fall apart, and they are not dying by any means. They're physically happy, but aesthetically horrible. So, it becomes a matter of a judgment. So, if you line 10 people up next to the side of that deer antler tree, some of them will say, I like it, it's got green leaves, I want to keep it. Some of them will say, I can't sleep at night, it's the most ugly thing I ever saw, I want it out. And then some will have some kind of a technical reason, it's blocking the truck, or it's raising the sidewalk, and they'll have their reasons. So, it's very, very hard to get consensus on all of that. But in our discussion, I agreed with her vantage point as a Shade Tree Commission, someone who is in charge of this group to represent the way the town should look, because the tree scape in this town is very dynamic, it is changing almost by the minute. Those trees are actively growing all the time, and so, as you manage that change over time, it's generally pretty slow unless an event like this is going to come in where you're going to remove some. And that change is, by comparison, quite rapid. So, I agree. What we ended up doing that day was we rode around, I got a flavor for what she was looking for, and we basically, by species, went around and looked for all the trees that had been heavily cut and that I considered no longer a valid Norway maple that would stay in a tree scape in a town of this character. There are so many beautiful trees in this town that to leave the butchered ones in there, I think, as an arborist, detract from the beauty of the road, the character of the road. So, I simply went around and I followed the wire and basically just kept saying, yep, there's one, there's one, there's one. And I followed all the roads that we had discussed out to the south end of the village, and that's what generated the list that I provided to the town for that purpose.
They are not all Norway maple, are they?
There are several in there at the south end, there's some walnut that are in there, and there are other species of maple in there, I believe, some sugar maple in that list, but the great majority are Norway. But again, my characteristic was what is butchered, what is beyond its useful need for the town. So, in case of the walnut, they're what we term as volunteer. So, in arboriculture, we have trees that are planted by people for a given purpose, whether we agree with the purpose or not, makes no difference that a tree was introduced into your tree scape by design. Somebody stuck it there. And that, that is mainly the Norway maple along the road. The walnuts are volunteer. So, they came in because a squirrel came in, buried the nut, forgot where it was in the spring, and that tree generated into a 90 to 100-foot tree within the wire zone. And then, characteristically, every time it got in there, it was, you know, started to get chopped into, into a butchered tree. So, that's where that dynamic sort of comes into play. There's a mulberry on that list. That mulberry is probably a volunteer as well, was probably in somebody's hedgerow. It seeded into that hedgerow, and then by the time it got up out of the hedgerow, the hedgerow got removed, but the tree was big enough that somebody said, look, a mulberry tree, we love it, and they kept it. And it's under the wire zone, and it's getting butchered. And that's very common, how trees enter a tree scape, it's a very random situation. It's an urban forest, if you will. So, if you don't do anything in the town, it'll be forested.
I think the other thing that we haven't mentioned, so, you're planning to come through and do your clearing, and as a part of this exercise, you along with Meg have identified, I think, nearly 127 trees...
There was 127 on that list, yes, sir.
...that are problematic, and you have offered, Central Hudson and your, and your tree clearing crew to, while you're doing the clearing, your regulated clearing, your 10-foot by 15-foot box, that you'd take down the trees that were problematic, that you'd take them down for $60 a tree, down, down to the ground, right? And so, we'd be left with, with a stump that's covered with ash or something. So, I don't know if we've talked about that yet, but that's really what, this is what we're talking about.
Well, and I think it's important to give the full picture on that. So, in other words, the utility is going to clear the corridor. Its only responsibility is to clear the corridor. So, anything left outside of the corridor would be left. At that point, if the village decided, oh my God, you know, they're really ugly and we want to get them out, the village would then need to exercise its resources to make that happen. Now, if you're going to do that along State Route 9, that requires State DOT setups, that's quite an operation, as well as the resources of a village, I don't know what your resources are. So, Central Hudson sat back and said, okay, if their intention is to, you know, eventually remove the tree, we can allocate resources, we have to make a case to all of the other ratepayers that is in their best interest to do so as well. But we can, we can remove trees where the wires are impacted, as long as the overall cost is going to come down from managing the utility. So, we were able to offer assistance to take the stalks down below, and also be able to move that wood out of the village into an area designated by the village, so that the village wouldn't have to use its resources. the village wouldn't have to use its resources for that process, should it decide to do so after the fact. The issue is, is we're not coming back. If we trim this time, then you're going to see us again in four years. So, whatever you decided to leave there would be standing there. Either you would have to cut it and move it, or it would stay there until the next four years. And hopefully, we would still be able to offer this process at that time.
So, it's hard for us to visualize what you're saying about a stalk. So, is there any way to do a test tree if we picked out a tree on Route Nine? There's a couple of trees there that are dead that probably should come down. And if you could, your guys are in the area now, maybe you could do one test tree for us to see, so we could see actually what you're talking about? We could pick out a tree.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't say I'm against that idea. And I wouldn't do Route Nine. I'd have picked one of the trees on one of the side streets. For us, it's a major commitment for us to set up on Route Nine, the state highway, the flagging requirements, the time of day that we need to set up on that. That would become a very expensive proposition to do, you know, a tree removal, or a trim. If you, if you pick one, you know, it would even make more sense if you wanted a, you know, a tree trimmed and a tree removed, so you can see both at the same time, so you can see what kind of service we're going to provide. I don't have a problem with that, but it would have to be on the side street where it'd have to get into a lot of permitting issues. It is, it's time, time consuming to do that.
The only reason why I say Route Nine is because the trees on the list go from Locust Grove around there into the village.
Yes.
Not into the downtown area, but probably to Rugies?
Yes, to Terrapin.
Especially the Terrapin.
Terrapin. Twenty-seven trees there. That's going to be a drastic look when that's, if they're taken down. So, just want everybody to be prepared what that's going to look like.
Right. So, let me give you a little bit more background on that too, from our perspective. So, as the director and overseeing the program in eight counties, you know, we have a pretty big operation. When Pete first approached me on this, I was open to it, but I was also very hesitant. So, one of the things that I wanted to give, and I think we presented it, Meg, is, you know, and John, we went back and looked at the number of trees we would typically remove as part of our normal protocol. Trees that are dead, dying, and are just, they're a hazard to the utility corridor, inside or outside of the corridor. So, then we sat down and said, "Okay, that would represent X amount of trees." Then he came to me with the list. And I said, "Okay, that's a lot more trees than we normally would do." So, like he was saying, we had to sit down and figure out what made sense, okay? And from my perspective, I said, "There's got to be some cautioning." So, how we got there, so you understand. For us to trim a tree is probably, on average, about a three to four-hour commitment from start to, you know, set up, flaggers, trimming, resetting on the truck if we have to, chipping the brush, and unsetting it up. So, you know, a trim cost is about, is equal to a tree removal cost. So, ballpark, our tree removal cost, depending on the size of the tree, is going to run anywhere from about, on average, four hundred to six hundred dollars a tree. That's average. There are some trees that we get into that are thousands of dollars. That's, but on average. So, long-term, short-term, weigh. So, we sat down, we said the delta here, and I think I presented it was, I wanted to say it was either twenty thousand dollars or greater, something to that effect. And I said I would split the cost. And then I actually broke it down even further because I said, "You know what? It actually makes more sense for me to provide a full turn, turnkey package for everybody," in the sense of trying to burden the municipality with their resources and trying to keep up with my crews to move wood to your yard. I said, "Not only would I cut the tree down, cut it as low as I could, that I would actually pick up the wood, bring it to the staging area with my log truck, and not overwhelm the village." I think we settled on, originally, I was looking at about a hundred and twenty dollars a tree. I decided, because I thought there was some hesitation, and I also didn't know most municipalities don't really have a lot of budget for this, I dropped it to, I think it was sixty dollars a tree. And that's where I left it. But it's a full package. It's a package of me coming in with flaggers, it's our trucks setting up, our trucks chipping the brush, cutting the wood into manageable lengths, putting them on our log truck, and moving them to the yard, and putting them in the yard. That's, that's more than the four hundred to six hundred dollars average tree. As Pete said earlier, we don't move the wood. The wood belongs to the village. It belongs to the landowner. So, from our perspective, the finance end of it, that's where we ended up. So, the sixty dollars a tree is pretty much where, that's how I got to that logic, okay? I think we had no problem on a side street doing one of the tree removals and doing a trim, so you can see what we can offer. So, you know, we'll take the tree down, we'll move it to the yard, and we'll trim another tree, and we'll chip it up, and you guys can take a look at it. And we'll pick two trees that are representative of what we would do for a trim. But for Route Nine, I can't commit to that because if I'm coming in to do Route Nine, I'm going to have four or five trucks. We're going to have a big DOT setup. And we're taking a lot more trees down at one time because it's, it makes sense that way from a permit and the operations standpoint.
So, you said that you would cut the tree as low as possible. So, typically, what's the range of what's low as possible? And what type of variables affect how low you can go? I think part of Howard's question stemmed from the fact that there was a stem left behind. Is it going to be like a six-foot stem, or, I mean, how do we determine what's the level?
We will leave it, we will get it as close to fifteen feet below the primary as we can, but still leaving a tree that is a viable tree, meaning it will live.
That's trimming?
That's trimming.
And removal?
If the tree was actually removed, we would cut it as low as physically possible with a chainsaw, to the ground.
Okay.
So, you would have a typical stump. But I wanted to speak to Howard's question. So, there's a dynamic here, which is an agricultural dynamic. So, residents, people are coming down there at the town, and for the past, I'm going to say roughly thirty years or so, they've been looking at this ever-changing line of Norway maples along the side of that Route Nine. And gradually, it has been becoming a larger and larger presence in everybody's awareness of what Rhinebeck is as they enter from the north. So, when that moves, that's a big change for everybody, okay? So, if they're not fully aware of it, they go, "It's a surprise. And why, you know, why is this happening? Why is this happening?" Well, the question really is for the group, is why is it happening? So, it's very important to understand that if the tree is taken away, the village's purpose is to replace the unviable trees with viable trees in locations where trees can be viable. In other words, I would submit to you that previous village planners and/or urban landscape planners selected a very poor tree for a long-term need. In other words, that tree's lifespan, effectively, in this town, has probably long since been exhausted, Norway maple as a tree species. No people at this table have a chance to go back to say to the guy who chose to put those twenty-five Norway maples in that lines in the town, "Could you use the smaller variety of tree when you made that choice?" It probably wasn't an agricultural decision back then. It was more of a municipal thing. We want to get trees in. We want to line the roads. So... So, having said that, if the whole line came out, what you would be looking at is the uncut trees that exist there. So, if you go and you look at the area, you'll see many beautiful maple trees, all on those private residences that line that road that are untouched, and actually really beautiful trees. They have framed the back of that line of butchered trees the whole time. But your butchered trees take precedence. So, when I ride into your town, as a trained arborist, I go, "Oh, boy, the center of this town looks like hell." It's a different perspective. We are not here to sell anybody on a removal, nor is Central Hudson advocating or pushing the village to do anything. We want it to be your decision because it's your town and it's your, it's your project to manage. We think the best thing that is being bantered around the table is the replacement. One of an educated variety, meaning having been unsuccessful with the trees along Route Nine, we've decided to add X number of trees in the town. What that would be would be based on your resources. And where they would be placed would be done by your Shade Tree Commission in spots where they can succeed. There are some models in other villages that have worked well. Sorbetes has done this. Garrison is doing this. Fishkill is doing it. Newburgh is doing it. Many other municipalities will be doing it because you cannot ignore them forever. Trees are genetically programmed to grow really big and fall down. So, they'll start falling down in every village, everywhere where they are. And all villages will be faced with this. So, a proactive approach of replacement. I do not believe that a hundred and twenty-seven trees from an agricultural perspective should be put back into spaces where they didn't succeed before. In other words, it's not necessary to go one for one. Where we lost twenty-five trees on the town, so we've got to put twenty-five trees somewhere. You already have beautiful, established shade trees in your landscape that you don't own. They're in your village landscape because they're on the village property owned by a private landowner. It is still part of the framework that frames your view of town. Just because it's somebody else's maple tree doesn't make it not beautiful in your town. So, there are a number of beautiful trees all along that line. If I'm not mistaken, there's a few mature ginkgos along that line, too. Is there a ginkgo or two along the line there? Can't remember now. I see them. I thought there were, but at any rate, that is really the dynamic. So, if I go and trim one, I guarantee you, it will be updated. There's not one person in this room that can walk up to that tree and say, "It looks great" when we've done clearing. Will it be completely viable? From a physiological standpoint, it will regrow? Absolutely. It's not going to be dead.
What's the underside of the primary line? What's the typical height? I know they range, but there's got to be a...
All right. So, to give you kind of a feel where, where we're going to be from a height on these trees standpoint, typical, typical, single-phase primary, top wire is primary. Five feet below, it's the neutral wire. So, from that five-foot below, from that neutral wire down, we're looking at fifteen feet we need to keep for a four-year cycle to tree growth. That's about where we need to dig. So, that puts you right about where the phone and cable line is on the utility pole. That's about fifteen to eighteen feet on the, on the small end, on the smaller utility pole. So, if we haven't come through and upgraded our infrastructure, typical utility poles about thirty-five foot, thirty, thirty-five foot in residential area, could get up to about fifty-five foot.
So, the fat cable telephone line, that's typically fifteen feet below your...
Roundabout, roundabout.
Okay.
In our, in our life, we generally say where the trees will come down to the bell wire, bell telephone. It generally is going to be around the bell wire. So, the village is now talking about several dynamics. So, now, if we're talking about coming in from the north end and we want to, we want to do something to improve the view of village from a tree perspective from the north end, the way you would accent, let's say this, the primary vision now, you're going to see wires and everything and poles standing there where there was green leafy trees. Okay? So, now, they're going to probably be more prominent individual aspect, which is where the replacements come in. Small variety trees can go underneath that wire zone. They can be quite successful for many years, ten or twenty. If the village does allocate some resources to do proper crown containment pruning on those trees with either an arborist or somebody who's trained to do that, that relationship can last for thirty or forty years. If you ride around northern New Jersey in some of the real old towns, Ridgewood, Paramus, you'll see old, beautiful, low-cut trees that the villages have maintained for forty or fifty. And they're, the stem diameters are the same as your Norway maples. And these things are cherries, apples, and a number of other small varieties that can and do succeed very well with proper crown containment pruning within a wire zone. That will soften your wire zone. So, that would be something I think is a prudent move, right, is to replace the small, the small variety trees that can succeed in the right way for that period of time is a good move. And that would be the message that I'm saying to you. That is really what you're talking about. Tree removal is not the message because that's only one part of the replacement process. It's the end result where there's a number of trees that are placed back in there by your Shade Tree Commission that really does the replacement of the butchered trees that you're staring at year in, day in and day out, year after year. The question is when you do that part.
So, Mike, I want to get just back to the, you said a trimming is equivalent to a removal?
From a cost perspective.
From a cost perspective. And yet, there's a sixty-dollar surcharge per tree to trim that down and down to the ground if that tree was chosen to be removed. So, essentially, what we're paying then is for the removal of the wood, is what you're saying, right?
No, what I'm saying is, is that your investment in the tree below the bell wire, for us to remove it, move it to your yard, the whole investment is the sixty dollars.
Have other municipalities adopted the same model of our, this proposal that you've given to other municipalities?
Other municipalities work different deals with us based on their financial needs. So, Sorbetes worked with us in a different manner. They worked, because they were dealt, they were dealt basically a devastating blow with the Emerald Ash Bore. A lot of their trees were ash trees, and a lot of them were really established ash trees. We're talking up to close to twenty to thirty-inch diameter trunks. And they were village trees. And they were not only into our infrastructure, but they were over houses. They were, you know, part of the highway taking as well. So, they were, they were, they were caught up to the rock and hard with us because the state of New York, also, the Department of Arbor and Conservation wanted them to do something. And the state has this great habit of acquiring things, but we know funding. So, we were coming in to trim, and we got approached to say, "Could you cut these trees down for us?" Well, when I looked at trees that were going to be four, five, up to eight thousand dollars worth of tree removals, my first reaction was, "No, that's just the reality of it." But after a little bit, I started saying, "Let me come back to the table." So, what I was able to leverage, it's a different scenario. I was able to get them to leverage with the DOT, New York State, which wasn't really coming to the table. DOT actually got brought to the table by the building of Sorbetes. We did the removals halfway. We got them, we got them down below the wire. State came in, heard the village, and their agreement, took the rest of the trees down, and took all the wood to the incinerator. So, at that point in time, the state took everything to the incinerator because it was the beginning of the infestation for the Emerald Ash Bore. So, what we got out of that was, we got our payment in a different form. We got our payment and then we handled none of the wood. State DOT worked right alongside of us. They did the road setup. They did the traffic control. They had their front-end loaders. They had their dump trucks. That was all savings to me. So, that was, that was the economic benefit. In this particular case, because I think your resources are limited and we're going to, and when we come in, it's such a small village, we're going to be in and out very quick. And I really don't want to overwhelm John. I mean, we're going to go fast, right? So, what I mean fast is I probably have hovering around here probably thirty or forty bucket trucks. So, when we get in here, there's going to be a lot of wood. And I said to myself, "I don't know what the road condition's going to be like. I don't know what parking's going to be like. I don't know what the snow level's going to be." I said, "Let me offer this whole package." And then I, and I made the price very, very reasonable in order to do that. I think, I want to ask a question in return because I think everything that we're talking about are cold-heart parameters that are easy to deal with. And I think the bigger issue that I don't know if it's going to be asked or not, but what is going to be the public perception, what is going to be the phone calls coming in? And I think one of the dynamics I can speak to, and I think Pete can even relate to this, based on our previous feelings with every single municipality, regardless if you do the trim, or regardless if you do the removal, you will have phone calls. So, it's a matter of where do you want to be in the process? Do you want to have the phone calls and do some removals and do some trim? Do you want to do all your removals, be done with it, you know, for whatever your reasons are, and you have the phone calls? But you're going to have phone calls. That is the reality. We've seen it in Garrison. We've seen it in Lowbrook. We've seen it in Sorbetes. We've seen it in New Falls. These are all areas that have very aggressive Shade Tree Commissions. City of Poughkeepsie, matter of fact, City of Poughkeepsie now is working with us so much that we're, you know, we're doing a lot of infrastructure upgrade. And they've opened up their facility to us. They've, we're pretty much removing trees that are, you know, part of our infrastructure process. They're helping us. So, that's a, that's a back and forth. Our monetary thing with them, they had, they created a permit. Our monetary thing with them, they had, they created a permit process for us. They waived it so that we could get in and do our work. Every municipality is a little different. So whatever we mutually agree on is what we agree on. But we are looking to try to establish a model. So when we were talking to Meg, we said, call Rose, I think it was Rosemary over at Sawgarden East at the Shade Tree Commission, right? We worked with them. We gave them ideas. They started their own grant money. They got their own tree farm going for replacements, and we helped them along the way. One thing I do need to get out is I do not get any funding from the state of New York for tree plantings. That is, that's something that I don't have. I have money for tree removals and doing clearance. I do not have any money for plantings. And it's unfortunate, but the reason for it is the state of New York basically has the same perception that we do. They gave me $1 million for tree plantings. How do I evenly distribute it among the municipalities that are in my service territory? Each municipality is different. Each needs are different. Each size is different. So they basically don't give me that. They give me money for danger tree removals, which is money that I have put towards trees outside of the corridor that are dead-dying and leaving. So that's kind of what I'm tapping into here is danger tree money to help with tree removals. But we're not going to tell you one way or another to remove the trees or not. I agree with Pete. That's your decision. I think you should be aware that you're going to get phone calls no matter what. But if you understand the program and you can explain it, and we'll be side by side with you. We're not abandoning you.
We're going to get the calls.
We're going to get the calls just as well. Trust me, we'll get the calls. But we're going to say the same thing that you are, that we had this talk, we had this conversation, we're all in agreeance, and no, it's for the best. And you guys do, based on the split, it looks like you have a plan for replanting, which is most, you know, in most cases, that's the solution to the problem, is having that. But we're willing to answer your questions. I would add just a little more to that, okay? The $60 is what Central Hudson terms as cost sharing. So utility has absolutely no responsibility to remove anything outside of the corridor at all. Any tree that exists anywhere is the landlord's property. So if it happens to be on village property, then it's village property. If it's on a piece of private land. So a typical call that we will deal with by the thousands in a calendar year. Ring, 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 Central Hudson, I have a tree on my front lawn. I think it's going to fall on the wire. Come take it down. Okay, utility goes out and says, sir, that's your tree, and it may fall on the wire, that's true, but we're not, it's outside of the corridor. We don't have any jurisdiction over that tree. It's your tree. Our only requirement, and the only thing that we will do is take off the two branches that are precluding you from hiring your own tree man to cut your own tree down. And that is the dynamic by which we have to operate wherever we operate. So when we come into the village and we've cut your tree to the bell water, we're supposed to leave. And so that cost of, let's say it was $150 or $200 for you to cut that stalk down is your burden, not the utility's. The question of whether you do it is still your question, and is it worth the $200 bucks to you? However, when we can make a business case that the fact that that stalk is now going to grow sucker sprouts at four feet a year and then repopulate the right way in two years, and we will not, we will start getting outages and problems with the tree, what we really do is represent the rate payer. I'm not allowed to charge the people in Sawgarden East for the excessive amount of trimming and outages that are caused by the tree that's Ryanbeck property. I couldn't remove it. It's not my right to remove it. The village said, no, don't remove it. But all of that extra material is going to be happening, and we have no control over that. So the cost of the system can go down if the tree is no longer going to create a problem at the second and third year, which means that that extra cost of removing the tree can be burdened on the rate payer because in the long run, it's going to lower cost of maintaining the entire system. Central Hudson spreads its cost maintenance over the entire system, not the village of Ryanbeck. So it's not a matter of the $60. So the $60 is your cost-sharing burden of that $400 removal, which would be $60 if you went out to the open market and tried to get a treatment to do anything for you for $60, you would know that that is, it's an opportunity that you can exercise. It's not, let's make a deal, what could the utility give you or not? It's the cost-sharing portion that we would be able to justify your audit to the Public Service Commission as a valid cost-sharing that the village put towards that resource being taken out of the state. And after the whole thing was looked at and they said, yep, those trees were heavy maintenance for that utility, and every time they trim it, and every time they trim it, you saved everybody a lot of money? Good job. And that's our job, is to spread those costs that way. I don't know if that explains a little bit more about, so it's really cost-sharing. If you were a private resident, you would get the same thing. So I would come to you and say, okay, it's a $2,000 tree removal. Your cost-sharing for this tree would be $500, sir. Give the utility a check of $500. And then we would hire our vendor, and we'd pay him $2,000 to cut the tree down. And we have that in our records, and that's what the Public Service Commission would look at when they came in later. The days of just going out and cutting a tree down to shut the customer up have ended many, many moons ago. It does not happen anymore. In the old days, they used to do that. I'll just take it down for them so we stop calling them. We can't operate under those parameters anymore. We're not, our regulations are way too tight. So basically, to answer your question, we'll do a sample cut, but it has to be on a side road. And I think the other thing that you guys have to understand is, I mean, this real quick, depending on where the tree's located in the corridor and how it's growing, if the tree's already been V-cropped, then the odds are we're not giving it a crew cut. So in other words, if it's already got its V-shape and the suckers are growing up in it, we're going to clear the suckers out, leave it. Would it make sense to remove the tree? Yes. If the tree's directly underneath it and it was cut straight across and it's growing straight up, that's how it's going to be cut again. Now, some trees are going to, based on the V-crotch and there's a lot of dead, we've seen a lot of dead branches. So we're going to try to take the dead out of these things as well. When we start doing that, that's where you're going to say, well, that's a little bit more aggressive than the last time. So the problem is, as we're doing the right job with these trees, what's happening is there's a lot more branches flying around. And we're taking a lot, we're taking more smaller outages due to the tree limbs on branches, our tree limbs leaning on lines, and that's part of this process. We are well aware that that's how it goes until we get through the three samples and then things are going to calm down. So the answer is yes, we can do your sample, but it's got to be on side street, and we can do that for a hit short.
Well, that's my idea. I don't know if I'll board on that.
No, I think that's fine. You know, for me, it just seems that 127 is a drastic, I think everything that you've said makes perfect sense to me. But for me, at one time, 127 tree seems drastic. And, you know, a phased kind of, you know, a plan that we had, it's a shame that we didn't start working on this in 2007 when you instituted some new regulations and said, hey, we're coming in, we're going to do this, and, you know, we've identified, you know, 127 trees. You know, we recommend, you know, 30 trees a year, and these are your problematic trees. And every time we come through, we'll take down 30 and you can replant. So, you know, I took the map and we drove around today and we looked at a lot of the trees. And, you know, a lot of them really, you know, to your point, is you can see the box already. The box is already there, and it is just those suckers that are, have filled in. And they're usually pretty small, and there's some dead wood and stuff. So it's really maybe what we've come to expect, you know, I don't know if we all knew it was four years, but we know that every once in a while, Central Hudson comes through and we're all devastated by what you do. But they do eventually, they do eventually grow in, and, you know, they're to the point now where we're pretty happy with our canopy and the way the village looks. So, you know, just for me, just 127 just seems like a drastic. And quite frankly, I couldn't identify each, I looked, I don't know if I looked at 127, I bet you I looked at 100. And I don't know if there's 100 that really need to come down. I mean...
Oh, that's, oh, believe me. Again, there's no recommendation from us to do a single tree. Okay? Structurally, these guys that cut these trees are utility clearance experts. Many of them are ISA-certified utility clearance experts. These are not just the, you know, the public perception is the guys do want-to-be cutting and they look for extra stuff to cut and they lump everything to death. Has nothing to do with that. What they're doing is actually getting a 90- to 100-foot tree to grow down and away from a wire for four years. So to do that, they remove large branches and everything else. Now, a lot of those large branches are removed to a place where the tree can heal from so that its structure will remain intact. Has nothing to do with the visual aspect of it. Technically, from a layman's viewpoint, it's been moved. Those suckers that you're mentioning are the tree's reaction to replace all the leaf foliage that has been removed from it. And so that stuff doesn't have to grow formal than the normal tree has, and it'll grow very quickly right back into that crown. So what we're doing is we're saying, yep, if you didn't want to take one removal out of it, that would be fine. Four years from now, when we come back, we're going to say, hi, we're coming back, and we're going to do it again. The number of 127, I think, is a random number. That may sound high to a lot of people, and may sound very low for some people.
Well, it's not random, though, right? I mean, they were identified.
They were identified. Yes. And they were identified...
And I would say, there's certainly probably 20 or 30 that are for sure. I mean, there's no question they're dead and they're just standing there. There's nothing left. They are that small.
I would say there's only two in that category, and they're out there on Route 9. And those will be gone. We'll just take those. They're small. Little study.
Can you just clarify for the public, 127 is out of how many total potential trees from what location to what location? So the public understands the scope of the problem we're talking about.
I can give you a little summary of where, you know, kind of bring this back together, where we're at. We have, you know, Central Hudson's coming through to do the clearing regardless. We have the list of trees that they worked with, with our tree commission. Since then, some people may have noticed the white dots. We had asked, about two weeks ago, we had a meeting with the tree commission, asked them to mark the trees because us looking at, you know, a list based on Central Hudson poll numbers was hard for any of us to visualize. So the tree commission went and marked those trees. So if you've noticed, little white dots, they're about a two-inch diameter circle, about waist level sprayed on the trees.
Street-side.
Street-side, yes. So you can see them from the sidewalk or when you're driving down the road. Since then, we had our regular board meeting last week. We asked for them to plot it on a map so that we could look at the impact, you know, how many are in which location, which they have done. I know today Scott and I went out and took a ride, and we saw most of them and, you know, put our own opinion on what, which trees should stay and should go. But in terms of the visual impact, the bulk of the trees are going to be on Route 9 on the west side. If you're coming from the north, they're going to be roughly between Locust Grove, Montgomery Street, and there may be one up that way, Locust Grove down to, directly across from Terrapin, just north of Livingston Street. The, in my opinion, the second most significant impact is going to be on East Market Street, heading out this way from Center Street, going out to about where the convenience corner is. There are some a little bit, a little bit beyond that. I think there's six or seven that are beyond that on the north side of the road. And then there are others, you know, sporadically placed throughout the village on the side streets. There's a number on South Street, Livingston Street.
South Barston.
Chestnut, there's one. Yeah, South Barston. So they're kind of scattered around. But that biggest impact, which I believe is concerning all of us, is primarily the Route 9, you know, gateway into the village that, you know, we do have that canopy, and that's what we're trying to work through with the advice of the tree commission, what's our, what's our best course of action here. Obviously, if the trees are going to be, if they're going to need to be required one way or the other, it is economically favorable for us to work with Central Hudson on this package. If they're going to come through and do their clearing, and they're done with the clearing in a month from now, we say, boy, those, that really looks bad. There's not enough left to that tree. It's going to cost us significantly more to remove the tree. So that's, that's kind of the purpose of this workshop.
I would add maybe just a little bit more on top of that. Not to be interfering, but maybe to put some on top. We can always play let's pretend, okay? In other words, let's pretend that we don't take the trees down along Route 9 corridor, just trim them, okay? And let's pretend that they really look chopped, but you know they're going to re-leaf because you're used to it, right? But if at that point it says, you know, I see what they're saying. There's a beautiful tree line behind it, and this is really detracting from the overall character. There are beautiful mature trees on the other side of the utility corridor. We have wonderful trees on both sides, and in the middle is this tree line, which now that we're looking at, isn't the most beautiful thing. When they come back in four years, maybe we'll pull the trigger at that point. That's another way to handle this project. We can do something. The cost-sharing issues may change based on the degree of work, but really what you're solving is an arboricultural perspective of a tree scape. So the gentleman back here with his asking of location, it has to do with what is the character of the town? What does it look like? The object is to say that you have a lot of beautiful trees. So down by Market Street, for example, there are those eight Norway maples growing right in front of a beautiful hemlock hedge. They are shading and destroying the hedgerow of the private landowner. So his whole sightline at the bottom of that tree that he planted for screening is being destroyed by the shade of the stubbed-off mantle trees that are leafing in. It's always an arboricultural issue when you're dealing with this kind of stuff. So I don't think that the message is tree removal. The message is not to your people, we're taking out 127 trees. What you're saying is we're replacing the unviable trees in the village, of which a certain number of them are going to go in this stage of the game. We see a benefit between utility. We're taking them out. That's the first stage. From that point, we're replacing a number of trees at these locations. And that would be the full picture for everybody to understand, is the object is to improve overall the dynamic and the beauty of the village trees.
But the thing is that when you cut, you, those 127 or whatever the number may be, get cut in a week's time.
Yes, sir.
And then, right? So that's pretty drastic. And then we have to live with that for a little bit of time. So we have to put, we have a planting plan, and we have the budget for the amount of trees that get, you know, replaced. And so there's quite a bit of time that elapses between the time that they get cut down and between the time that something else is planted and becomes established. So that's why I think, you know, a phased type of, it would be less drastic. It would be more thoughtful. And the other thing that I want to point, you keep saying that there's trees in the back. There are trees in the back, but the one thing that you're not recognizing is that when you drive into the village, the frequency of those trees, they line the street. And the way that they've been cut over time, I think Keith and I both noticed, is that they do create this canopy. They're actually growing away from the wires.
Yes, sir.
And so, but the trees that back them up are random. And they're, and they don't line the street, and there are nice, some old-growth healthy trees, but they're like scattered all over the place. They don't give you that canopy that matches the east side of the street. So I understand what you're saying, and there are some nicer trees there, but I don't think you get the same look once those are gone.
True.
I want to ask Meg, Meg, I'd like to ask you a question because I think you've looked at the broader picture, and you've looked behind the trees that are being proposed, and you've really given, from what I've heard, you've given some, and what you've said before, you've given some thought into what that really end result would look like. And I'd like to have that opinion.
Well, I guess I'm coming from a similar point of view of a lot of what Pete has expressed about how I see trees, maybe, which is different from how other people in this room see trees. And I like to see trees develop into what they're supposed to develop into because I think they're most beautiful when they can do that. All over Europe, they pollard their trees on their streets, and that's a look, and that's okay. But to pollard trees and to keep them within bounds, you have to do that every single year. And I know in the village of Ryanbeck, and the idea of even replacing these trees in the median with smaller trees, yes, we could do that, but they would also have to be pruned on a regular basis. We have such a small budget now, we can barely keep up with a minimal of takedowns that we're getting requests, or, and we can't even do the pruning that people request us to do because we don't have the budget for it. So unless something, you know, we get some kind of windfall or somebody that endows trees through the village of Ryanbeck so that we could have a big budget to maintain our tree population, it's incumbent upon us to put trees in locations where we can, big trees where we can, smaller trees where we can, and to increase the diversity of of those trees, so that, God forbid, if the longhorn, the Asian longhorn beetle came up here, we would lose every single maple in this town, the same way Sagerty lost all of its ashes. So for me, when I did the tree inventory years and years ago, and I saw that over a majority of our trees were Norway maples, add the sugar maples, and it was more like 60 to 70%, I felt that the tree commission's biggest and most important job was to introduce a diverse species into this town, so that if something came in, and it will, we've lost, you know, we're losing hemlocks, we lost ashes, you know, and along, you know, they lost a lot of maples, thankfully, so far, it's going to be strictly the spread of those, but if it comes north, our whole maple population could be lost. So it's important for us to put in a diverse, different types of species to avoid a massive loss at any one time. And I think, so that's, that's one thing that I would really like to do when we replace these trees. I understand the beauty of an alley, both sides of a street being the same species all the way down, that looks great. I don't think the median is the place to do that in our town. So, and on the, you know, we don't have a canopy so much on the east side of our street, looking down. You look down that street, we don't have that long line, the same way we do on the west, because we've lost some of those trees. But we do have some beautiful trees on people's lawns, of different species. I mean, you go up across from the hospital, they've got beautiful maples, they've got a walnut, they've got a metasequoia, they've got beautiful, beautiful trees in that lawn. And it's not in LA, but it is beautiful, and that's what you see when you come into the town, because those trees have developed into estate-type trees. And there are similar big lawns on the west side, we're fortunate to have it, on the west side of Route 9, where we have the potential to put in bigger trees if we set them on the backside of the sidewalk. So that's kind of what I would like to do. One other thing that hasn't been mentioned, doesn't have to do with the tree look so much, but I think the village, and I don't know if it was last year or the year before, had to replace a lot of the sidewalk on Route 9, just where these Norway maples are. And they had to replace the sidewalks, because they were bucked by these trees. Now, we can cut them, but hopefully, you know, they'll grow a canopy, and if they grow a canopy, the roots will regrow back again, and these sidewalks again are going to have to be replaced. Now, maybe it won't be four years, and they'll have to be replaced again, but they will have to be replaced, as long as we leave those Norway maples there. So, you know, that hasn't been brought up today, but, you know, we did the sidewalk commission, we have all this conflict between sidewalks and trees, and I just, you know, any opportunity that we have to avoid these kind of future expenses, and with smart planting, and, you know, I'd like to take advantage of. So that's why we marked the trees we did in the village as being taken down, and I know it's drastic, but I think we could, you know, we could, we plant 20 trees this spring along Route 9, for about $2,200 with our tree planting, you know, the way we've planted trees, if you want to do it, but anyway.
So just to be clear, the recommendation from the tree commission is to, is for removal of the trees with the white dots on them, that are plotted on a map there?
Yeah, we agree it all makes sense for the company. Don't have to, but it does make sense.
Right, so that's the, that's the piece that, you know, that we have to...
How many trees?
The total is...
Twenty-five. There's 25 along Route 9, she would replace it with 20.
So not 127, but 45.
Along Route 9 spot.
There's 127 total.
Have been marked with white spots that are proposed to be faked, yeah.
That's correct.
In the village, not just somewhere else.
No, that's correct, 25 over.
It's not at all about...
Every single tree from the corner of Montgomery Street, where it splits off, all the way past my house, has a white dot.
Right.
Every single tree.
That's pretty much...
That's 25.
That's about 50% of the trees.
On that side of the road.
Well, I counted both sides of the street. I counted the number of trees that I saw that were near the wires, just in, I got about 53 trees from Terrapin to just past Locust Grove. I'm not taking out 50% of them.
That, that sounds about on-spot with what has, has been recommended. I know tonight is supposed to be a planning board meeting, but they didn't have a meeting, so we did invite our planning board. We have two, Michael Gee and Tim Decker. I don't know if you guys have any, any input?
I guess the only...
And I don't necessarily need the microphone, but if you would...
The only thing I would suggest is that, one of the difficulties is, it takes a long time to get shade from a tree. And we have, and I went out this weekend and went up Montgomery Street and lived in chestnut, and noticed some places where we do get, have some nice shade trees, they're not pretty trees, but they do provide shade, and at least the appearance of shade. If we replace them, it's going to take decades to get that kind of shade from some of those trees. So that, that's where I'm more in line with what Scott said, in terms of doing something where we don't necessarily take them all out at once, and, you know, because, as some people remember, back, at one point back in the 1960s, they took a whole lot of trees out along East Market Street and planted them all at the same time. And now we have this corridor of all these trees that are going to all go at about the same time. And I guess I would like to see something done that kind of staggers.
Just so everybody knows, none of the trees in the downtown area are in this plan. Now, the downtown area is like, over to Terrapin, over to South Street, the locusts, they're not, none of those are, none of those are slaves to be taken down. None of the trees up to, up to here are slaves to be taken down, Center Street. So the downtown area's going to be maintained.
Michael, do you have any comments?
Um...
You don't have to.
No, looking for years, I've just been noticing, as they've been cutting, and you see more and more of the wires, but the Norways have a tendency to grow lower and over, so it's almost a tunnel effect. And it's very shaded, if they were to all go, all of a sudden, it's going to be, to some people, I would imagine, it would look like a lot of other towns where Rhinebeck is special. But from a point of viable tree, they were all the wrong kind in the wrong spot, and, you know, to me, I would, I would look forward, get a lot of them out, and get something smaller, set back on the other side of the sidewalk. You know, I could, you know, live without a shaded aspect, because the wrong one is better. And the price of what they're saying, for me, is, you know, seems to be a very good price line, because I had a tree, a maple, two years ago, that was two feet on my side, and I missed it, you know, being a street tree. It must have been $2,500 to take out a tree that was dying. And the tree commission put one in there, and my wife, when the tree came down, oh my God, it's changed my house, and it's like, it's going to be different. And all of a sudden, a year later, you know, it's not so bad, you know, it's going to be nice, and it's like, so, you would get calls.
The other thing, as was said before, that these maple trees along Route 9, that the roots are grown into the storm drain system, and their, and their roots are going, we have a video of this, we had a video, the former mayor had it, I hope we still have it, but the roots grow in, in the pipes, there's ceramic pipes, and there's cement between the pipes, and the roots actually grow through the cement and catch all the debris that's coming in, so, and then we, we had to hire a roto-ruder thing to chop up all the roots. So that's another thing that those maple trees are doing along Route 9. I'm just giving you the facts, I'm not saying I'm in favor of anything right now, but just the facts, like, the fact is, $60 a tree is very inexpensive to cut a tree down. Costs us between 500 and, as you said, 2,500 to cut a tree down.
Can I ask a question? Do you know how many calls Central Hudson got last year for the trees or branches falling during storms on Route 9? We live on Platte, so I know that there were definitely a few, or trucks that took down branches. Is there any idea of the number of calls or issues that you've had to deal with?
No, there's, we get calls every single day, every single day.
Were there any power failures Rhinebeck experienced in the last 10 years, the falling of trees on Route 9 between Locust Grove and Terrapin?
Couldn't give you that dynamic.
Do you think there are any?
Oh, well, when we, when we have outages, we report them, if they're tree-related outages, they would be reported in data. But I have to give you this dynamic. In order for Central Hudson to protect the wire from tree breakage, we would need 100 feet on either side, because the average height of tree in Rhinebeck is 100 feet tall. So those trees that are underneath that wire zone, we're not concerned that they're going to fall on the wire, what we're worried about is the, the private trees that are owned by landowners, we have no jurisdiction over. Those are the ones that break and fall on trees.
So can you provide the board, so they can make an informed decision and understand the, the dynamic of this problem, can you go back to your office and tell them how many power outages the village has experienced in the last 10 years from the...
No.
There's no data to tell you?
Excuse me, just as a reminder, this is not a public hearing, we will entertain some, some questions, but just to bring it back to be clear, the, the question that you're asking, maybe we would like to know that data, but really, again, we're not, we can't stop them from cutting around the wire, it's more of a cosmetic issue that we're dealing with, and, you know, a tree health issue from...
Well, on that point, there's...
So, if, would you mind coming up, please, just identify yourself, and we'll take a brief question.
You know, I just, you know, to Dodd's point, I was going to ask this before, is does Rhinebeck experience an abnormal amount of power outages? You know, do we have a tree issue, you know, compared to in other municipalities?
I'll answer, I'll answer that, I'll let him ask the question, might be one of those.
Might be the same answer.
I'll be brief, Dodd, Frank, the village resident. My questions would be, not necessarily to be answered tonight, but maybe someone can be. You already answered the question on quantity, we're interested, I think it would be informative for everybody to know how many power failures have really occurred, particularly from that sort of really important canopy as you come south on Route 9. That would help inform the public on the choice between what the regulations say and what the reality is in Rhinebeck. I also would suggest to the board, if you haven't already done it, that you have your attorney review the regulations these gentlemen are quoting, and see if there is any appeals process available to you for those regulations. Also, if you decide that you aren't comfortable with what's being recommended, that you contact our local senate or assemblymen, to see what influence they can have on the public service commission. And I think you answered the other question about all the other streets that are involved other than just Montgomery. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have one quick, two quick things to say. Tammy Valentino, I'm a village resident.
Just come on up, tell us your name, where you live, so we can catch it for the, for the record there.
Tammy Valentino, I live on Montgomery Street. I love all those trees, but of course it's going to look like crap when you hack them now in a month's time, because there's no leaves on them, they're going to look terrible. My next question is, if you do take all those trees down to stumps, who's going to remove the stumps, and how much is that going to cost? And that's going to be an eyesore as well, so I'm just, just curious about that. That's all.
The stumps will be removed by the village highway department, we have a stump grinder.
Can I say something?
Okay.
I think also with the tree removal, it's going to allow us for proper sidewalk repair, which would also reduce the liability, with some trip hazard for someone, someone who might have support of us.
So John Fettin, although it says zoning enforcement officer, he's also our superintendent of public affairs, so he does oversee these issues on, from multiple angles.
So, before you forget what you're going to say, maybe we should let...
Just real quick, I think from, from my world, you guys are getting to the point where you need to have this open discussion, you're asking all the right questions. So, you know, the southern plantation look, trees on both sides of the road, right? Great downside, that's where the term came from, right? But in the northeast, the reality of it is, there's a utility corridor. You have a utility corridor, we have a utility corridor, it's usually on one side of the street. You're going to have your gas, your water, your sewer, your electric, your cable, right? All that's in the utility corridor. That utility corridor has to be maintained, by you, by us, by any other utility that's in that corridor. So, some of the questions that are always asked, underground, okay? Underground, and you underground it, then you can't have any trees. Well, what do you mean? It's underground. Well, can't have roots growing in the electric line, can't have roots growing in the sewer line, can't have anything growing over top of it, you have to have grass. So now your tree canopy is gone in an underground scenario. And then when we, for our world, if we have electric outage, where is it? We have to thump the line, we have to dig it up, and it becomes another world, it's longer restoration. You're asking all the right questions. Let's clarify something. Central Hudson's not asking for 127 trees to be removed. Upon request of the shade tree commission, we reviewed the trees of concern, we identified 20, 127 that we believe meet our criteria to come out. So, reduce liability. The trees that we take out, if they're village trees, legally, you're reducing your liability. They fall over, they heave a sidewalk, fall on a car, fall on a child, it's all risk to the village. You're reducing your risk by taking the trees out, that's another dynamic. I think you're asking all the right questions. It's ultimately up to you guys to decide what you want to take out. The shade issue is definitely a valid concern, but trees are going to grow. You're to the point now, like any other village in our service territory, you're getting to that point, you're asking the right questions. Our live trees, that are living organisms, are starting to go into decline. How are we going to replace them? A phased approach could be one of the ways to do that. And we could help you in a phased report, or approach, I have no problem with that. But, right now, the way, the way we're operating, every four years, so if you wanted to do X amount of trees per year, that's going to change my dynamic with you guys as far as caution, okay? Because I'm not going to be here, because I'm going to be in another part of the service territory. So to give you a feel for what we're up against, I have a staff of four, we cover 7,300-plus miles of distribution, and 670 or 680 miles of transmission. We have thousands of acres, thousands of miles that we have to cover, either on a four- or five-year cycle, depending on the type of voltage of some line. Med that we have trimming are not regular tree med, that you would hire to do yard tree. They're trimmed to work in an insulated bucket, insulated boom, insulated tunnels, working at a minimum 13,500 volts. They, they are working around live wire, and it's a very dangerous job. So, you know, I think you're asking all the right questions, I think you're going in the right path. I think you're hearing from some of the people that are involved in the trees in your village, that there is a good reason for them to fail. Ultimately, you guys have to make the decision. We can answer any other questions that you want tonight, and we can. You know, outages, to answer your question over here, outages, you know, they come in many forms, it could be a tree branch, it could be an unknown. Our data, our district engineers have those, have that data, and how many tree-related outages, squirrel outages, unknown outages. I can tell you from a system-wide, what's going on, right? So I can tell you this, we came very close to not hitting our mark for the state government for reliability for outages. So we were very, very close. I mean, we were down to count the customers and keeping our fingers crossed. We have no control over the weather. We, we are rebuilding our infrastructure, we are trimming, we are doing everything that we can to help keep the lights on, and keep that dynamic going for everybody. Trees are only part of that solution from an outage standpoint, okay? They're not the end-all, be-all. We have outages all times of the day, anywhere within our service territory. So it just happens. We had one that we were dealing with, parking lot tonight, up in, where, South Cairo? South Cairo. Big tree, across the wires, we have a crew out working right now, one of my staff's out there. One of my staff's out there. So it's just one of those things that occurs. So willing to answer any more questions that you have tonight, but I think ultimately you guys have gotten to where every municipality that we've dealt with has gotten to. Sarny solved their problem four years ago. The chairperson for the shade tree commission pushed and pushed and pushed. She ended up getting the budget, she ended up starting her own tree farm. She got a grant, she wrote her own grant. We helped her a little bit with some birding and stuff, and she's well on her way. But they had it forced upon them because of the Emerald Ash Ward. It basically devastated their town. And it hurt us. We had trees that we had to get out of the way, and the state of New York required certain things to be done with the trees. It was costly. We found a way to do that cautioning that worked for us and for the state of New York because the state didn't have any money either. So those are the dynamics that we offer. Maybe just one other thing to add, we're not going anywhere. We will come to your village and help you logistically and planning-wise as often as we can. So the trimming event occurs, a number of trees or no trees, or whatever happens up here happens. And next year, you guys are making plans and you want some information, we're going to come back. The utility is growing to a place where it wants to be a working part of the community, wants to be able to help make the choices that are going to happen. When you lead them, just another way to look at things, because you can look at them from all your perspectives that you want to. That tree will eventually be a tree that may be elected to come out of the landscape if not now, because the alley is good now. What this gentleman spoke about, also about the shade, eventually that tree will grow out over a place, and then whatever storm event breaks that tree and drops it into the center of that road, and your DPW cleans it up, and then maybe that's the time to take it away. These things are not stuff that we're governing and/or determining to happen at given points. These things are just going to be happening. So it's a matter of management. The risk issue is always going to be looked at for the village, is the village managing the risk? So if there is an unforeseen event and some kind of damage occurs to property or people, that's potentially where, when people mention lawyers, that's where somebody could say, oh, you know, I experienced the damage, I want the loss back. So I'm sure that, you know, as long as you're in front of it and you manage your scape accordingly, then it'll make sense, so. But we're not going to go anywhere, we're going to help, and we're not going to make the choices for you. We can't.
We're not asking.
Yep.
We're just asking for information, we're asking to make the choice. And I mean, that's why we're all here. And, you know, to that note, I know we have, you guys have come out on many occasions to work with our DPW or tree commission on smaller projects as well. So we know you guys are, don't just show up once every four years. Do we have other, is there another?
Answered your question.
Answered your question. Anybody else with an unanswered question?
Yeah, I just, Pete?
We got a gentleman in the back.
There you go.
Yeah, come on up.
My name is Guillermo Fester, I'm a resident in Parsnich, not Parsnich. I just want to know if you can clarify why when you say you bury the wires, there's no trees? Because I just happened to grow up in Madrid, Spain, in Supoza, maybe not in recent rural legend, but they say it's the city with most trees by square meter in the world. Maybe it's number three, maybe it's number 25, but anyways, a lot of trees and all the wires are underground. And the first time I saw a wire on a post was here in the state, so.
I can't speak between America and Spain, but, you know, from what I've seen in Europe and certain countries, their utility corridors are in conduit, in vaults, underground, right in the sidewalks, and they're managed that way. Alls I know is in the United States, the code rules and the safety rules associated with placing underground utilities are such that, for example, for gas, we have to do, over certain gas transmission corridors and/or distribution lines, we have to do safety checks. And you can't have any vegetation other than grass over top of it when they do the flame ionization test, I think it's called. That's one aspect. So I think, I can't speak to Europe versus America. I just know that from my world, from the electric side of things, trees growing over top of buried cable is not a very conducive environment. And we typically don't do that, so.
Meg, did you have something else?
Yeah, no, I just wanted, because when we had spoken before, you indicated that there was some limitations in time for you in terms of when the village needed to decide what trees they wanted removed. And I just wanted you to speak to that deadline, so to speak.
Central Hudson is in the process of clearing all the wire that comes out of the Reinbeck sub, as much as I mentioned before, roughly 200 miles or so overall, of which the village center is a small portion of that mileage. So in other words, we're going to keep the guys out onto the hinterlands, if you will, or the outskirts of the village, in order for you guys to have time to make the choice. If 127 trees were removed, let's just say you said do it all, that is about a three-week project for the crew that I was assigned to do it here. Roughly a three-week window to make those trees go. So that can be implemented whenever you guys decide. That doesn't have to coincide with our trimming. But I would guess, round about by the end of February or so, once we're going to need to, once we've run out of mileage outside of the village, we have to come in and clear the village and go. So I would say that that would be happening towards the end of February into the early part of March, that that would be our kind of end game, where we, you know, we could delay it all the way up until that point for you guys to make a choice as to when to do it.
Like you needed to know that before.
Yeah, no, technically.
I mean, that's where we're at. You know, we discussed a potential tentative plan today. Scott and I, when we were driving around, we identified probably, I think, seven or eight trees out of the 25 that, you know, that we thought were no question they should go. So we were talking about a system of possibly identifying those trees, we were further marking, some of them are at East Market. I think we're missing a couple sections of that.
We missed a couple of sections.
Okay.
I mean, if you have to have it, I can get more maps.
They're very costly, so it would hope if the village would be willing to pay.
We will certainly pay for those maps.
Yeah, they're 12 months.
Okay. We will certainly pay for those. Yeah, pay for those too. So if we can...
Yeah, you can get them, if you need them, I can get them.
Yeah, and then maybe we can actually put a number on the tree, is what we talked about, and then we can come back as a board and, you know, and make an approval tree by tree. Because even going through the maps sometimes, you know, if they're on the property line, we weren't exactly sure, we're counting from the end of Center Street going this way, and if we're marking trees, every, you know, we say there's a third tree going up from Center Street, and we missed one, then all the wrong trees are going to be cut. So we had to go back, loop around a couple times in different locations to make sure that we had the right ones identified on that map, so. And that's just a tentative plan that we... What's that?
Nothing, I was thinking back.
No, I was just saying, if there was some confusion, maybe Nick could go with you.
Yeah, I think, you know, we were talking about what kind of, you know, device we could use to put an actual number on the tree to correspond with the map so we can be very definitive when it comes down to what the exact picture is that we're looking at. But that would, that's defensive.
What everybody up here thinks, because ultimately that's what's... No, you have to, I think you have to look at each tree by itself. I mean, we can say there's 27 trees along Route 9, but some trees are dead, half-dead. Well, other ones are okay. So, and then you have to look behind it, like you said, there's trees behind it that are growing.
Right, and also sidewalk issues, and there are also drainage issues, so with these trees.
Yeah, we weren't able to take into effect where the potential drainage issues may be, but we did look at, you know, the trees that were behind it, the individual property owners. Were able to, you know, look at the trees, you know, to the north and south of it and say, well, here's three together, well, let's pick the best one. That's kind of the process we went through, but that's, you know, only two of us, you know, driving around for a couple hours. So, and obviously, it doesn't match up exactly with the opinion that you guys had. So we have to kind of put that all together, and I think maybe the next step is, you know...
Excuse me, I have one more question for both, either Meg or for Pete. Because I'm not an arborist, and your timeline is now, you know, towards the end of February. Is this the time, is because from an arborist's point of view, to do this? Or is there a better time, like summer or fall, I don't know, to do the trimming? If we said trim and we wanted to preserve the viability of the tree, when is the best time to do that?
Late winter is typically the best time for pruning. But there's a lot of, I don't want to say, there's a lot of collective agricultural wisdom that comes down. It's not based in science. Physiologically, the tree can sustain cutting as long as the degree of cutting is not so drastic that it ruins the physiology of the tree itself. So whether it's winter, spring, summer, or fall, typically trees can withstand cutting. In many of the horticultural arenas, seasons were chosen for given reasons, mainly for blooming purposes and other things, on apples and that kind of stuff. But for the maples, if you cut them in the winter or the spring or the summer, it's not going to make any difference in terms of vitality of the tree. Our schedule is based on how we have to get through the 7,000 miles of wire. So we're just here, we happen to be in Reinbeck now, we have to finish the circuitry and move to the next town. We clear 365 days a year.
All right, one more question. I've always also been under the impression that you can remove too much of a tree, and that hinders the tree, shocks the tree, per se. Is the trimming that you're proposing, you know, that 10-foot cut on either side and 15 feet below, is that to a point where it can physically harm the tree now so that we're really putting more, that tree into a more dangerous situation of survival?
It's going to be different for every tree. Every tree is at a different point in size, right?
No, I think the discussion is, are there any trees that...
Okay, so where you have to start, if you're going to use the science aspect of tree physiology, there is never a point when the physical cutting of a tree is of any benefit for the tree. So if you're an apple orchardist, you're butchering your tree to make it proliferate, bloom, to get a proliferation of a fruit set, the tree is stressed within an inch of its life while that's occurring. Yet it's done for a number of years because that tree is such a durable tree in response to that type of treatment. It'll produce apples till the cows come home, and, you know, it's a farming process.
But we're talking about Norway maples.
Yes, sir. So the first stress factor for the Norway maple is the fact that it was placed in a road cut and it's saturated with salt every year.
Still not my question, Pete. My question, Pete, is, can you remove too much of the tree? That now we've taken a tree beyond its, it's damaged the tree.
No, physiologically, the tree is going to respond and regrow and continue to regrow. What it's doing is trying to replace the leaf loss that it's getting through the pruning event, but it doesn't mean that it's physically unhealthy.
So the trimming won't kill the trees?
Negative.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear.
However, in concert with all of the other growth factors, the girdling roots that are in those trees, the compacted soil, the salt problems, the excessive heat from that same roadway that it's shading, so they're being cooked by that hot summer sun from the asphalt below. When you, trees generally don't die from one given reason. So my buddy got a limb off and the tree happens to die. When I investigated it, the tree has a number of different factors that are degrading the tree.
I understand it has a lot of peril, I just didn't want to add one more peril to that.
No, what you're really referring to is girdling the tree. If the bark is girdled at some point in time and it can't get its lifeblood, its juices to go up and down the camion, the zine layers of the tree, then the tree's going to die. But that's not what we're doing. We're cutting branches and clearing stuff.
I'm not an arborist, I wanted to understand the impact of the tree.
But what you two were talking about, that's really what you're referring to.
And to be clear, it is not a healthy for the tree to have it cleared back from that wire. So no, it's not a great thing for the tree. But at the same token, it's a matter of whether you leave that thing in. And that's one of the reasons why they're not successful, is because they're repeatedly kept in that short space.
Do you have a question? If you, when you take down these trees or to sort of can, is there any excessive growth on the root system at all?
No.
No, so what, which system is there? Is the whole?
Root system grows throughout the entire year, and the root system will grow off the stored energy of the tree. So when a tree drops its leaves in the fall, it has done all its growing for the season. At that point, it begins a tree development. So that's happening every year throughout the cycle.
So my concern is sidewalks and sidewalks.
Your root system's going to continue growing through the ground structure.
And to help finish that discussion, your village is managing a hard scape roadway called a road system. And in it happen to be some very hard dynamics, where trees don't really obey scientific principles and/or engineering principles. So they're going to fill up spaces of soil, they're going to move sidewalk pieces, they're going to block pipes, they're going to do those things. So when you introduce them into your hard scape, you're going to have those things to manage. And at some point or another, they will become unviable, right? The most obvious one is the little dead one, it's no longer viable. The one I love most in town, and I'm not kidding around, I think you have a beautiful, it's a tree that's affected by a burrow fungus. It's a little maple on the west side, and it is the absolute coolest thing in the county.
East side.
I'm sorry, east side. And, you know, she asked me to remove it, I said, I don't want her to remove it, I think it's really, really neat. However, in terms of a tree, it's not really a tree, it's just an odd, it's beautiful in its own right, almost like a statue, right? It's a really neat thing, but...
I think we're in there, it'll seem really odd.
Yeah. But that one, you guys need to see them trimmed.
I think you can lean on that when I go over.
That was not your problem.
I'd like to, just a moment, to thank our tree commission representatives for taking the time to do all this work. And I was hoping that maybe you could each share a little bit about your background with respect to trees and things of that nature, so that, you know, we can understand where your opinions come from.
I'm a, I have a degree in horticulture. I have a nursery, plant nursery. I ran tree commission in Watertown, Massachusetts before I moved here. I'm a volunteer, head of the landscape at Woodersheim Preservation.
I should have went first. I basically have just been in landscaping for about, you know, over 15 years. So as far as my knowledge on trees is, you know, from what I see and what I've dealt with, I've taken down trees myself, and I burn firewood, so I know how to identify dead trees, and it's basically why I'm here, to help out.
Thank you both.
Dodd, good?
Well, I have a question. Dodd, again, village resident for the gentleman from Central Hudson. Is the regulation that relates to the 10-by-10 box, that was instituted by which state agency?
Okay. There is no regulation, it is industry standard that we're held to, so.
By whom?
The New York State Public Service Commission. So our program is basically reviewed and approved by the state of New York based on what we provide them, based on the needs that they, based on what they want us to achieve for, for safer, electric reliability, safety on the system. To achieve that, our program, our specifications, which mirror pretty much every other New York utility, is such. They review it and approve it and provide funding through rate base for us to form that trimming. That is an offshoot of 2003 blackout. The more stringent requirements that we've put on ourselves to meet the requirements for electric reliability is come from that blackout. Now, the federal government, on the bulk side, the transmission side, does require it. We have certain clearances that we have to make in, we have to clear up roadway edges back. That is a federal requirement on bulk lines.
But the bulk is not, doesn't apply to us.
No, so here, our trimming specifications, which really, for the most part, have been in place through our history, they've just been expanded. So the 10 feet on the side is always, you know, we've always done side trimming. It's been five or 10 feet on the side based on the tree species. Below has always been the 10, 15 feet below. It's really, what we've changed is really going above. It's removing the overhang above the line, it's keeping the branches from falling down and hitting the line. So what we've done is really, the two things that really have changed is removal of the overhang and removal of tall-growing tree species beneath the line, so that grow up into the line. That's what we're trying to reduce, is the grow-ins and the fall-ins. That's what we're trying to do. That's what we're trying to do with our specifications.
And that regulation, basically all utilities in New York State, follow that same regulation in their submissions to the PSC note?
Right. Every utility has a tree clearing program. All those programs were reviewed by New York State Department of Public Service staff. If they don't like the program, they'll ask us to tweak it. If they're okay with it and they buy into it, then we get the funding for it.
And then, once that yearly or bi-yearly or whatever that certification, first with the PSC, do they have a monitoring unit that goes out and sees if you've complied with those 10-by-10 box?
Absolutely. I've had New York State Department of Public Service Commission people take rides with me, audit. We've had all sorts of audits, both on the transmission and the distribution side. They're actively involved.
And is there any appeals process for that 10-by-10 box?
Uh, yes, see? There is no appeals process. There really isn't, there isn't, I don't know what. There really isn't anything to appeal in the sense that, in the village, a little different. But when we're outside of the village, we're dealing with easements or fee-owned property that we own. So those easements dictate what we clear. Industry standard's always been 10 feet or 15 feet on either side of the line. And that's written into those easements. When you get into a village setting, you're dealing with a utility corridor, right? You're dealing with a highway maintenance permit or a town permit or a county permit. And those maintenance practices are based on best industry standards, right? So if our rightways have 10 feet or 15 feet on the side of the line built into it, that's our practice. So, yes, you as a village could write your own tree ordinance and say, you could ban me from doing any sort of work. The village of New Paltz did that. It lasted about eight years. And then when they begged and pleaded for us to come back because they were basically having brownouts, when we got in to trim, they saw the most drastic cut ever because at that point in time, we had trees that were fused over the lines, growing into the lines. They were popping fuses. It becomes a more dramatic thing. We don't want to ever be in that scenario. We want to work with the municipalities as best we can. But, you know, our clearing standards are clearing standard. It's an industry standard that's pretty much nationwide.
So you're saying the village, I'm not suggesting we should do this. You're saying the village could pass a local ordinance that says we want a 6-by-6 box?
I wouldn't say that. What I'm saying is, is that we have a franchise agreement with you guys, right? That was signed probably 100 years ago to bring electric and gas to this facility or to your village, right?
They're ready for the gas.
Right, they're ready for the gas. What I'm trying to say is, you have certain rights. What you choose to exercise, that's up to you. I'm not advocating sororities have to the tree.
Just asking what the possibilities are over time.
But you're not gaining anything from it, is what I guess.
Well, you have to let the villagers decide what we're gaining or losing from these decisions. I understand you have perspective from an industrial and an arborist's point of view, but the villagers have a perspective from an appearance point of view and the continuity of life in the village. So let me just finish.
Okay, go ahead.
So what I'm suggesting that the board consider is doing the minimum amount of work on the trees that you feel is reasonable. Obviously, the ones that really look like they gotta go, they gotta go. And in the meantime, look at whether you can do something on a local regulation basis that is some kind of compromise between the 10-by-10 box that the regulation requires, that Central Hudson is forced to comply with in order to get PSC certification. Some compromise between that and what we'd like to try to preserve among the existing tree population over time. In other words, do something minimal for this four-year cycle. And over the four years, partly just by involving the tree commission and looking at trees over and over again, doing them, passing something that sort of regulates on a more specific basis, how much dramatic work can be done on trees by an outside organization such as Central Hudson pursuant to whatever regulations you might want to look at. Because taking down 25 or 57 or how many are the numbers? It's a particularly 25 out of 50 on Route 9 is a huge, I agree with Scott. I mean, if you want to take the public hit, that's okay. But, boy, it's a dramatic appearance change for the public. So I would look at some short-term, not risky, but small set of changes to the trees now, as small as you can get away with and not risk trees falling down and all that other stuff. Why you look at a longer-term regulation change that at least lets you control the box so you can decide, because you're deciding now by tree by tree anyway, decide in hand-in-hand with Central Hudson how you want to proceed. Maybe over 10 or 20 years, we can move the trees, but not take down 127 now and then have to plant them all and wait 50 years for the canopy to regrow. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Will there be any questions to press?
Sure, you want me to tell after or?
That's fine, if you want to.
Good, fantastic. Anybody else up here? So that's the plan we're going to go with, is we're going to try to number, do we want to number just the ones that we are thinking?
Well, you and I have the benefit of looking at all the trees together. I think the other board members should probably take, maybe, I think the steps we should take is this, is that, Nick, you get an all-inclusive map and mark the trees on there. And then maybe we can get downsized, smaller files for each of the other board members and they can go out and visit the trees as well. I think from that point, we maybe should number every tree. I think we should take a little tag. We should put some numbers on the trees and give everyone the benefit of commenting on trees. And then go from there. I mean, or maybe you want to keep it to the 30 or 40 or 10 or 15 that we all agree on that should come down. I don't know.
We have to find a way to know that we're all looking at the same tree. That's the issue.
Well, I just wondered if you want to identify 25 trees or you'd want to identify 127 trees? That's the question.
No, I think we should identify, I mean, there's 127 on the list. I think that number is proposed. I think we should identify 127 trees. I don't think it's that big of a task to put numbers or letters or combination thereof to, so we can all identify each tree, right? And then, from my point of view, I have gone out. But again, I'm trying to envision this thing not being an arborist. I would like to take it an afternoon with Pete and Meg and go out and have a tree, and then, and look at these trees. And get their, and get, you know, experts, not a novice like myself, trying to make a decision on how that tree is. I'd like to get some opinions based on that tree. And if we have to break them over time, that's what I, that's what I would like to do.
Well, Meg, you're not going to be here, right?
I really appreciate that because I think it's important that someone that has, you know, some kind of arboricultural background
Yes.
is looking at that tree with you so they can point out the issues, whether it's tree roots being cut because the sidewalk was split in two years ago and how that affects the stability of the tree, whether there's a crack in the tree, whether it's dead wood above, whether it's, you know, what the trees took behind. And the road's going to look like once that comes out and how they're going to go toward the street. I would love to be able to, I'm not going to be here all of February.
Okay.
So that's an issue. And I'm sorry, I would do it, but I'm not going to be here.
Well, today's only the 19th, so.
Well, I won't be here as of the 23rd.
Oh, okay.
So.
Oh, yeah.
This week.
Okay. Is there somebody else that can substitute for you?
I mean, I could, I don't have to educate them backwards, you guys. But I can definitely point out the things that are wrong that we agreed upon when we walked and looked at every tree.
And what does the board think of that? I mean, giving some of this.
I think it's very useful to have insight from, you know, people that specialize in this arena. I think that's one of the reasons why we appoint the tree commission. And I think that we should, to a certain extent, defer to their recommendations, but being educated about why they've come to certain conclusions. So I think that's a very reasonable proposition.
I think it's reasonable, but for, in a matter of four weeks, develop a list that's 127 and all of a sudden act on it, regardless of the reasoning. I mean, I'm sure you can come up with a reason that why 25 or 30 trees or 10 or 15. But if, for some reason, someone comes up with a reason to take down 127 trees, regardless of their opinion, but to all of a sudden create this over four weeks and act on it is, seems very hasty and thoughtless to me.
I don't think we have four. I think we have more than four weeks.
Well, this is an issue that's only two weeks old.
Yeah.
Okay. And so, you know, if this was a plan that we had developed over time and wanted to do that for sure, that's an excellent way to approach it. But I don't know if any answers that are created over the next couple of weeks that results in the removal of 120 trees is really responsible.
But I don't know the result of that is. Scott, I don't know if the result is or equal.
I'm all about the phasing. What I'm saying is, is that to go around and identify every tree, and if every tree has a reason to come down, then I think you need to prioritize those 20 or so trees and then come up. Because, let me say this, you know, it's easy to cut down the trees. But all the other stuff that comes along with it, the stump removals, the tree replacements, the sidewalk repairs, don't forget, it's $60 a tree times 127. I think it was set at $7,200 to take down the trees. All the other costs that come along with that are going to be hundreds times.
I think you're gravitating towards cutting, you're thinking about, the objective is, you know, how many trees are we going to cut down? And I don't think that's the objective. I think the objective here is to look at the tree and then make a decision about that tree. And it may not be to cut it down. It may be to, let's, this tree is savable and we should save it for whatever reason, right? Because I'm all about saving them versus cutting them, if that's possible. But it's hard for me to make that decision, not being an expert on trees.
We just want the opportunity to have an informed decision-making process. That's, I think that's what you're both saying.
Yeah, but I don't think it's going to take that long if you go around with Nick.
Well, let's look at what's happened already. The, our tree commission has looked at all these trees. They've worked with Central Hudson. And they've come to us with a recommendation that these 127 trees are either not viable or for one reason or another, they should be included on the removal list. So now it's up to the five of us to take that input and decide what is palatable to the residents of the village. So we have their input for the most part. And I think we need to go out and say, make a determination of what we can live with and what we feel is appropriate.
Can I just, I'm gonna get back. I hear that your focus is totally on the trees on East Market and, or mostly on the ones on East Market and Route 9. If you take those out and just looked at the others, 12 of which don't belong to the village at all, we discovered they're town property, so they shouldn't be on those. Those are the ones on Claus Drive, so they should be out. But.
Fantastic, we're down to 115, 112.
No, no, I'm just saying.
Scratch your mouth, 25.
Yeah, I'm just saying, if you don't, if you don't take, in terms of the village replacement of these trees, is what we're in the control right now. I think I mentioned this to you before. When we do, or if you decide to do the ones on Route 9 in a piecemeal fashion, it's going to be very hard for us to replace those in a piecemeal fashion because we have to go to the DOT every time we replace those for permission. The other ones in the village that we marked for removal, we don't have to go through that process for. So maybe if you want to have a longer look at the ones that are particularly grievous because they have such an impact all at once, maybe you could put that off and think about the other ones in town, which are together so much. I'm just throwing that out.
Even if there's a few clearly dead trees in those areas you're talking about, they should come down.
Well, there are a couple of small, totally dead trees. I mean, I still think it's going to be a problem for your other infrastructure on those East Market and 9s, but.
I believe our DOT permit allows us to do planting throughout the year. How continuous?
No, you just have, but you have to get permission.
And you have to get permission on what type of tree you can plant?
Yeah.
Give you a list, they give you five or six trees we can plant? A statement, talk. We can work.
You have to get permission, is all I'm saying.
And you guys gave us, on that map, has the proposed locations of replacement trees on there as well?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's something that.
We have like a minimum of like 50 replacements planned for, if all of these were to go. Meg, you said we can get 20 trees for $2,200. What size is that? What could we expect to get?
The ones we've been planting.
They're like five feet, five to six feet tall.
No.
What's the caliber?
That's what I'm asking.
Inch and a half.
Some of them are many, it depends on the species.
No, just, just for everyone's general knowledge.
No, I mean, if you look around town, we planted about 200 trees.
Okay, it's all.
Those are the trees that we, we want.
They're bare root trees.
They're bare root trees.
But they live.
So we will number the trees. And we will, we'll be back here in one week. I don't know what we can accomplish before then, but we will try. Then we'll be back again on February 9.
What's that? It's later, not these flag around each one.
Yeah, let's, we'll meet offline and come up with a plan of how we want to number them and how we'll divide the.
You may have to get out of your car.
We will get out of the car. Here we go.
I got out of the car looking at the pole numbers.
I guarantee you're talking about the right tree.
Right.
Well, sometimes the pole number, there's three trees to one pole number.
Yeah, because the pole numbers are off.
Yeah, so that's why I think.
Some of the numbers weren't correct. There was a couple that it wasn't a tree, you know. They called for three and then like two, things like that. It wasn't that many times. But also the pole numbers just jumped around like crazy, so it's kind of.
Yeah.
That is true.
Anybody else on trees? What's that?
Did you want to say something? Trees?
Oh, we got another very short business item that we'll finish and get right to the process.
Do we have a tree permit?
Yeah, we have a tree permit.
Oh, okay. Before we get to the tree permit, and everyone needs to recognize, we have Tom Johnson up there from our Highway Department. He's our resident tree guy. So thank you, thanks.
Permit?
Permit?
The permit was for Danko, which I believe is the mental health. It was next to the parking lot.
Well, what is that?
Well, is that the, you get in touch, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Well, there is the one I showed to Howie, like back here by the truck. And if that's.
Has the tree commission made the determination of this one?
On Danko?
If it's the tree that I showed Howie, I think it needs to put down. Oh, they just want to. Yeah, so they're going to hire somebody else to prove.
Well, we assume that. They put down integral. They didn't say whether they expected us to say the half or not.
And plus two, we want to regulate how much we.
Is this your regular tree commission meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
We need to have, we need to have tree commission meetings.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
We only have the one thing.
Okay, no, just wasn't clear, usually the protocol is you guys just bring us a recommendation.
No, I know, but...
Okay.
This came in, we'll knock it out. This came in after our tree commission.
Right.
Okay.
Since we're not meeting again until the fourth of March.
Has that been determined if it was in the right-of-way? Or if it was not determined it's in the right-of-way?
Which ones were we talking about? The locusts? Yeah, is there ones along East Market?
They're along East Market.
Yeah, they're in the right-of-way. Or west of them, sorry.
They're looking to prune them, there's low limbs over the parking lot and cracked limbs over the road.
Well, I mean, I'm sure there is due to probably the Christmas lights.
Anyway, I think the question here is, who's going to pay for it?
Forty-seven is...
If they're paying for it, what, if they can do it, they just can't go nuts on it.
They could lift, I would say they could lift ones here all the way around, but they shouldn't have to lift more than that. They're all material.
Yeah, and then cut the dead stuff off.
But I don't know if they're, you know, it doesn't...
And if they're not asking for us to pay for it, don't say anything.
It says that Integral Tree and Landscape is doing the work, so they're hiring.
Is that from Tom Grant?
Three trees.
Is that from Tom Grant?
No, this is, it's from Danko, it says.
What's Danko?
Danko, name of an African. Is that forty-seven West Market?
The mental health...
Is Danko the...
I don't know, maybe we should look into this.
Yeah, I don't think Danko is the owner of that property, I don't believe, right?
Well, the property, it's also leased out by three different people, but then is it also, who's doing it?
Well, I believe that the property owner needs to bring us the...
Dan Colnegy, oh, so that would be Danko.
Oh, yeah, so it's, okay, it's a corporation.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's these three trees right before the driveway.
To trim them?
Yes. I think, is it one left, right, one level of branches?
No more than that. As long as they're paying for it, I guess.
Yeah, right. I make a motion that we allow Danko to prune the trees, the three trees, as long as they're paying for it. With the restriction as, with what restrictions?
Well, I don't think they need to lift, they shouldn't lift more than one layer of...
One tier of limbs.
One tier of limbs.
With a restriction of one-tiered limbs from the bottom. Who will inform them of that? Will they get a, do they get a paper permit when they get to...
I usually do those.
That's, that's...
I just approve.
Was there a second on that?
No.
Is anybody here seconding that?
Careful, second.
Let's touch your trees, I'll second it.
Any more discussion on that? All's in favor?
Aye. Is that the only tree? Yeah, we just have to talk about one.
Okay, well, we only have one short meeting. We have the non-farm lot animal law that has been proposed and sent to the board. So I'd like to make a motion to set the public hearing for February ninth at seven o'clock for that proposal. Second discussion. How many public hearings do we have set that night?
That'll be the third, I believe. Is there a second?
I second the...
All's in favor?
He was discussing.
All's in favor? Discussion. Can you tell me the other two?
The other, we have the parking on Center Street and... Which proposed zoning change? Oh, there's the brush pickup. Brush pickup.
This is a priority because it could be litigation.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Anybody got anything else for the board?
The Rock trap?
No.
Make a motion to close the meeting?
Second discussion.
All's in favor?
Aye.